I will call this June 5th meeting of the Mannerie Town Council to order. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one guest speaker tonight, Delia Cathy Afzali. Kathy, you're top of the agenda.
Oh my gosh, the pressure. I don't know. You must have made the A-list tonight. I don't know how that happened. It must have been because I had dinner with Larry Hushour, so I'm now in the in-crowd. Now, oh, I was gonna do a handout. Can I do a handout?
Sure.
So, good evening, everyone. Good evening, Round Aerie. I see some familiar faces. And in case you don't know who I am, I'm Delegate Afzali, Kathy Afzali. I'm your state representative, one of them that goes to Annapolis to be brutalized for three months out of there. And I'm so honored and pleased to be here tonight to greet you and kind of give you a quick roundup of what happened in the Maryland General Assembly. And what I handed you was a bit of a handout. What most town councils and mayors are usually interested in when I come and speak is how much money are we getting and how soon are we getting it? So, that's one reason I bring this little handout. And usually, the top of the list, what everybody wants to know, is highway user revenue. And so, I think you can see that we did increase the amount from what you got last year. It's not where we would like to be. And I know that Roger Wilson is here and knows only too well that every municipality is crying about how some of the highway user revenue in the past administration had been put into the general fund and then used for other purposes other than local roads projects. So, Governor Hogan, on his behalf, I would like to thank him and tell you that he's doing his best to renew those funds back to those local communities where they belong. And so, the Frederick County and the Carroll County delegation brought back record amounts of dollars to our local communities. We had actually something really great happen here in Mount Aerie, and that is the caboose got a matching grant of $25,000. And I think some in the community here learned an important bit of information, and that is, you have to ask. Ask, and you know, the answer's not always yes, but rails to trails, and the caboose were very bold and asked for the money, and the Carroll County delegation delivered. So, kudos to the new councilman Larry Hushower and all of those who made that effort. And Mary came down and a few from Mount Aerie came down to the hearing. It was a cold day in March, I think, and kind of dreary out, but they boldly came and asked for the support of the legislature, and they got it. So, that's quite a tribute to the work y'all do here. So, basically, we had an amazingly fast, I don't know how much time do I have. I don't want to overstay my welcome here, but I'll be very brief.
As long as you think you need.
I'll be very brief.
That can be dangerous, but...
Never say that to a politician.
You're not one of the bad ones, so that's why I feel safe.
Thank you.
There are some who would come in here and would take that for a run.
I'm hoping to make a liar out of you tonight. So, anyway, we just had an amazingly great year in Annapolis. Sometimes you only hear about the bad stuff that goes on, but there also is a lot of good stuff that goes on. And we were able, as a delegation, the Frederick County delegation, I'm the chair, the Carroll County delegation, Sue Krebs was chair, and now Haven Schumacher is now the new chair. So, we, everyone is working very hard. It's kind of interesting, because I'm in two delegations, so have a different perspective. And because Mount Aerie splits two towns, you have a vested interest to know what's happening in both of those delegations. So, what I included in your handout was money that came back to Frederick County and then also money that came back to Carroll County as well, so you kind of have an idea. The Carroll County delegation brought back other projects that were matching grants. One was the Boys and Girls Club in Westminster. The Carroll County Public Safety Training Center got a million, six fifty. The Carroll Hospital Center got five hundred and twenty-four thousand. And the caboose, of course, and the Union Mills Homestead, a hundred thousand. So, really, like I said, you don't know until you ask. And this year, we're going to be a little bit different in our process. So, if you do ask, if any of the local groups want to ask for matching grants from the delegations, Frederick County is changing our process. We are actually going to have an open public hearing regarding the grants and the matching grants. So, because it's been a little bit haphazard up until this year, and sometimes things come at the last minute, and we want to give everyone a fair share to get those matching grants. And the governor puts that in the budget for just these local nonprofit groups to help them and to help the communities and to, because a lot of those nonprofit groups are doing such amazing things in these communities. So, the, you know, the governor has a vested interest in making sure those local nonprofits are healthy and thriving. So, anyway, with that, any questions? Scott?
I do have one. I'm just curious, and maybe it just pops out at me. Can you just tell me why or help me understand? I see Frederick County went up 3.7 percent for education, which is great. But I see Carroll County went down 2.0 percent, and when I look across the board, it looks like the Carroll County numbers are almost all negative.
I know. So, this is what's happening in Carroll County. We have declining school enrollment, and it's become a problem because it all goes by formula. So, Frederick County has increasing school employment. Carroll County, it's going down. So, we are, you know, we have a certain amount of fixed costs in Carroll County because there's schools in communities that, you know, you have to run the building, you have to run the electric. I mean, there's a certain amount of money, but you have less children and less funding for it. We actually, the Carroll County delegation advocated to Governor Hogan to increase that money, even though it wasn't part of the formula, and Governor Hogan did deliver and gave more money than the formula allowed. But yes, the student enrollment is declining, so therefore, there is less money for schools coming in. And you might have heard that Twin Ridge School, you know, was slated to close. Some of us, including people on the council, fought hard to make sure that that didn't happen. We kept that school open another year. We have a similar school in Frederick County, Sibyllesville. Every year, the school board says, we gotta close that school. And every year, me and a few others go and fight the fight, and you know, the school's open for another year. So, it's kind of a similar situation. And, you know, we've tried to do different things. We've talked about whether or not we could run kids over the border, because Frederick County has a surplus, Carroll County, you know, doesn't. Maybe we run kids over the border, and Frederick County pays a certain amount, but the state doesn't allow it. The state doesn't allow. And we've tried in other jurisdictions. Back in the day, Leroy Myers had students, I think, that lived in Hancock that had to drive an hour and a half on the school bus to school when, in Washington County, which was only about 20 minutes from their neighborhood, the school was right there, and they wanted, the people in that town wanted their kids to go to the Washington County School, and the state just wouldn't, the state wouldn't do it. So, we have fought that battle many a time, and so, it's just, it's too complicated when you start mixing state funding and jurisdictions and so forth. So, but good eyes.
Thank you for explaining.
Mannerie used to actually exist that way. When the high school was here in town, the Frederick County kids, and Pete probably remembers that, but the Frederick County kids went to the Carroll County High School here in town, and Frederick County just, you know, threw in some dollars rather than divide the town up. When you were talking about the school closings, was it Mannerie Elementary you meant, not Twin Ridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
I didn't want, well, I just know, because I didn't want that to get in the paper.
Yeah. Sorry. Did I miss?
Because I know that's been, and Kathy was very helpful in working with keeping Mannerie Elementary from closing, not Twin Ridge. I've not heard, Twin Ridge is okay.
Sorry.
But Mannerie Elementary was on the cutting block, and there was a big move to keep that open, and Delegate Afzali was very helpful with that.
That is going to be your basis. But, you know, here's the thing. I never say never. So, if there is a situation where you would want to have children coming from Frederick County, you know, I would help advocate for that, if that would help some of the overcrowding in Frederick County. And to build a school is so incredibly expensive now, and, you know, the delegation has done so much work trying to keep those costs down. Sometimes we have to fight even with our locals in legislation, because they, you know, they vote for bills that increase the cost of school construction. So, we have an opposite problem in Frederick County. We have school crowding.
I wonder if that would be something for consideration, since Mount Aerie is four counties. So, primarily Frederick, Carroll, if something special consideration could be made for that, because we have kids that are literally right on one side of the street going to two different schools.
Well, that's something that we need to talk about, and maybe we need to advocate for that. So...
Thank you.
Got the other question. About two years ago, there's tax equity, and that's really what they call this jungle mess up here.
On the front page?
Yes. There was going to be an attempt to put, it fluctuates every year. Each one of these, you know, your police aid and all these things fluctuate every year, so you can never count on it. And they were going to try to put this in the legislation. Do you remember that, Ron? Was there, whatever happened with that?
So, I think, I wonder if we're talking about the same bill? I know that the delegation had, the Frederick County delegation had a tax equity bill that you weren't double paying if you lived in the city. Is that what we're talking about?
Right.
We're talking about the same thing?
Right.
So, the Frederick County delegation did pay that, and I think we did a statewide bill. Didn't the bill, I think the bill, it wasn't statewide. It was local to Frederick County. So, we could certainly advocate in the Carroll County delegation to do a Carroll County bill, much like the Frederick County bill, that, so that people who live in the cities aren't double taxed for the same services.
Right.
So, yeah, that's something that I think I can definitely present. We're going to have a Carroll County delegation meeting.
This is in access to what we get from Frederick County with the county tax after these programs. So, we're not talking $100 here. Okay. My, that's my question. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Thanks.
Well, thank you. Well, I'm here to listen, and sometimes I even raise my hand and ask a question myself, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thanks. Always good to see you.
Thank you.
For those who don't, I guess, know what highway user revenues are, that's something that gets talked about a lot at these meetings. Essentially, when you put gas in your car, there's a tax that's on every gallon, which goes to actually pay for the roads, which makes some sense. The assumption is, the more you drive, the more you wear the roads out, the more has to go to that. That money goes into a big pot, and it is, in theory, supposed to then be divided up. You know, every mile of road gets its three cents, or whatever comes out of the gas tax. A number of years ago, the state started, for lack of a better term, keeping the money that was supposed to go to the towns. Mannerie would come in every year, and we'd say, okay, we have 48 miles of road, and therefore, we're supposed to get our 48 miles' worth of money from that gas tax. And the state decided a few years ago that they wanted to kind of keep their hands on that and use it themselves for whatever they wanted to do with it and not give it to the towns. That's why the towns have been fighting all these years, to get those revenues back, which we're supposed to kind of get anyways, because that's actually what pays to repay our roads, which is what that tax is for. And I see we have Roger Wilson here from Frederick County. Did you go, yeah, just, do you want to say something? Jan Gardner's office. And a candidate for, is it, they're aldermen in Frederick City, right? City, okay. I wasn't sure what they, around here, some people are burgesses, and some people are aldermen, some people are council.
All the same.
Aldermen.
All the same. For the record, Roger Wilson, I'm the government affairs for Frederick County, and my address is 1816 River Miss Court, Frederick, Maryland. Good to be here tonight, and I see that the mayor is missing, so hopefully, he's in good spirits somewhere. Good to see everyone. Looking forward to attending the conference, MML conference, at the end of the month. The county executive wishes you all a wonderful next session, you know, with the new legislative Larry coming on board, and good luck to you and joining the team here in Mount Aerie. A lot of good things that are happening here. If you have any questions, please, you know, ask them now. You know, I'm always available, so, anything?
No.
Yeah, I just saw you guys.
Thanks, Roger. Yeah, we, we, we saw Roger Wednesday night at a dinner between all the different counties, so anything we had, we would have asked then, while we were eating.
Okay. All right, well, good. Well, good to see everyone tonight and all the residents here in Mount Aerie. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, we got a, got a presentation up next. Chief, you doing that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good evening. We have a special presentation for a nice young community member here in town. One of the most important things to do when you're starting a new police department is to create their identity. One of the major ways we do this is through the insignia or logo that's usually represented on the shoulder patch of, on the sleeve of the uniform. You know, before I came here, I was at North Middleton Township Police Department as the chief up there for about five years. And I kind of worked to help reinvent their shoulder patch up there, to give them, to help reinvent their identity. And one of the ways I did that is I solicited all the officers to come up with an idea and to present their idea to me. And then I took something from each of their ideas, and I created a new design or new patched logo for the department, and I merged them all together, and that's how it came to be. And that way, it helped give them ownership in the department and helped them, you know, it inspired them and improved their morale. Now, coming to Mount Aerie, when I began to ponder the idea here for our town police department, I didn't have the luxury of having the staff to help me do that. So, what I did is I started thinking, and I thought about, you know, many things, actually, when you're starting a police department, there's such a laundry list. I wanted to really engage the community and also get some buy-in as we were starting a new department. This is something new for the town and a rather historical event. So, it kind of came to me then, you know, what's the best way to do this? So, I figured it would, we would have the community provide us with input. And we put it on our website to solicit community members to become part of the process and ask them to submit ideas, and it makes everybody a stakeholder in the police department. So, once we, once we got that done, we started getting, getting some requests or some ideas and so forth. People were submitting ideas to us. Received numerous responses. Many were very good, and they ranged from written descriptions of what the patch should look like to elaborate computer-generated graphic designs and so forth. But finally, one came in that kind of stood out amongst all the rest, and it was a hand-drawn concept design. And what made it kind of, what made it very unique was it came from a 14-year-old South Carroll High School student that lived here in town. First of all, I was amazed at his creativity that he put forth in the effort and so forth. And the fact that it was inspired by this 14-year-old kid that's involved with this community and his desire to submit his concept to our department, and that's why we kind of chose that, because it does kind of represent the community and so forth. His concept will be present in our department's history, and it'll represent us for many years to come. So, the decision was made with a little tweaking. We took his concept, and we went to Liberty Emblem, which is a local business in Carroll County over in Eldersburg, and we tweaked it a little bit, and we came up with the current logo that you see on my shoulder right here tonight. So, we are honored to have this remarkable, now 15-year-old young adult, who's a Mannerie resident again, and his family here this evening with us, so we can share our gratitude with him and his family. Zach McDonald, can you come up here? Sergeant Snyder, you here? I can tell you a little bit about Zach here. Again, he lives at Summit Ridge here, and he's been here for 16 years, right? With his family. His family's lived here for 16 years, he's been here all his life. Growing up, he played record sports here in the community, which included baseball, basketball, and soccer. He's on the golf team at South Carroll High School. He also likes to fish at Prospect Park. He watches the town meetings and likes to keep current on local events here, so don't see that a lot of time with some of our teenagers, you know. I think that's kind of amazing. He also likes transportation, and he's interested in the Streets and Roads Commission, so you've got someone to take under your wing here. When I asked him what he wanted to do, I was actually kind of taken back, because I thought for sure he was going to say he wanted to be a police officer, but he told me he wants to be a meteorologist. So, well, we got some time to work on him yet, you never know. But, you know, we'll see how that goes. So, I kind of asked him what inspired him to submit his concept, and he said he likes the town. This is the town he's grown up in, and he thought it would be a great way for him to give back to his community by sharing his idea. And he also recognized this would leave a mark on the community and would become a part of our town's history, and he is happy to contribute to his hometown. So, with that said, Zach, me and Sergeant Snyder here, we had something made up for you. You can see, upside down. Here we go. Zach, here, I'll let you hold that. As you can see, we have our patch, our logo. This is the concept drawing that Zach provided us. He drew the police car and the badge and the patch, and also a certificate recognizing that he assisted us with creating our inaugural patch. So, thank you, Zach.
Nice.
Also, for, I'm sure, a 50-year-old inspiring golfer, we got him a gift card to Dick's Sporting Goods for $100.
Cool.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, while you're up there, you just want to do your report?
Absolutely. Resident troopers are at the corner, so I'll be heading there.
Okay.
All that good funnel cake away.
Beat me to it. We're not buying extra alert.
Actually, this must have been a fairly busy month. We attended approximately 20 different trainings and meetings and so forth in the community. I submitted my report to everybody. Hopefully, everybody has a chance to look at it. I know it was kind of late, but things were very hectic last month. Some of the significant activities that we went through was, we worked pretty hard all month on our hiring process. We conducted interviews for both the lateral and recruit-level applicants. Several have moved on to the polygraph portion, and most of them have already gone through that, and we are now anticipating them entering the background investigation phase, which would approximately take about a month roughly to get those done. Again, the plan is sticking to the timeline and hopefully have these people on board by August 1st to start some training in-house, and then finally out on the streets come September with the resident troopers, working with them. And then, come October 1st, we'll be assuming full responsibility for all the town's law enforcement needs. We're also working on the Computer Aid Dispatch Records Management System project with the county. PSA Betts is our lead on that. He attended several meetings this week. The county did pass in the budget to go to the Keystone CAD system, which will interact with the Keystone Records Management System on the police side. The Hampstead, Manchester, Westminster City Police, and the Mannerie Police Department, as well as the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, will be operating on this records management system together. The biggest thing with this, it'll, the major plus for it is it will allow all the departments to work together, have information to, you know, access to each other's information, information sharing, which way aid in criminal investigations allow us to work together more effectively. The other positive to it is there's a cost savings associated with it. Keystone has offered a two-for-one licensing deal for the mobile client software, which we will need, so it comes in much cheaper than most of the other records management systems, so there is a cost savings to it as well. So, we've been working on that, and that hopefully will be up and running by August 1st countywide. The other, the other issue, or the other event, was the fact that we received our cars from Breckford. The outfitting's complete. We've seen the Newmark car rolling around town, the K-9 unit. And then, we also have an additional five vehicles coming in, and they will be going up to Grafcom and Frederick is a local business, somewhat local business, that we're having them do the graphics on the vehicle. And I think it looks pretty good. I assume that everybody has already seen it, so, and they're out about. Future activities, again, we're still continuing with the meetings with the CAD RMS system, the backgrounds investigations. Sergeant Snyder is continuously working on his, over 100 policies for departments administrative and field manuals. Corporal Halterman's still working on the guidelines, and PSA Betts is handling most of the human resource issues with the applicants and so forth. And of course, they also started to build out on the station. If you go up, if you stop up there now, you can see that it's got the framing up for the walls and everything, so that's moving along nicely. And again, we're looking at finishing our patrol car project here in the future with the installation of all the graphic designs, so, that's our report.
Sounds good.
Any questions?
Yeah, I know it's been covered in previous meetings, but being the new guy, you get to ask all the new questions, so...
Sure.
Curiosity of when our Mount Aerie police force actually starts, starts the process of enforcing the law and the state, state police go away?
Well, that's, that, the effective deadline, well, we will actually be starting, hopefully, here about mid-August. The plan is, and I've actually had a meeting with the troop commander of the Barrack, and they are part of the transition team that's assigned. We've had discussions. Our plan is to have the officers hired by August 1st. They will then go through roughly a couple weeks of training to bring them up to speed on certain issues and go to firearms and get their qualifications firing done to qualify with the weapons that we'll be carrying, and we'll have first aid and AED courses and some other issues and training on the new records management system. So, there's a lot of, a lot of training we'll do for the first couple weeks. Hopefully, we can get it all done. Once the third week starts, the plan is to have them ride with the troopers for a week to get to know the town, to get out in the community, start meeting people, find out where the problems are, what the issues are, and so forth. And then, after the third week, roughly August through September, we will be shadowing the resident troopers on calls and helping and working in conjunction with them as a team. But once October 1st comes around, that's the deadline that's scheduled for us to separate from the resident trooper program, and at that time, we'll be responsible for all the town's needs.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, up next, we've got approval of the council meeting minutes. I will move that we approve the minutes. There were three sets, May 1st, May 10th, and May 15th. I'll move we approve all three. Got a second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Mannerie Volunteer Fire Company reports. That going to be Bruce or Jeff?
Oh, Bruce.
You're both here. I wasn't sure which one was going to get it.
Incident summary for May, rescue calls. We had 105 in Carroll, 66 in Frederick, nine in Howard, one in Montgomery, for a total of 181 calls. Fire, we had 18 in Carroll, eight in Frederick, one in Howard, and one in Montgomery, for a total of 28 fire calls, which gave us a total of 123 calls for service in Carroll, 74 in Frederick, 10 in Howard, and two in Montgomery, for a total of 209 responses. If you've been following our incident reports, you're going to notice a certain downtick on the number of calls in Frederick County and an increase in calls, especially with the rescue calls, in Carroll. That is because the urgent care center that was at 1502 South Main Street is closed now, which is Frederick County, and it was only open certain hours of the day. Express Care over in the new facility is open all the time, and...
And it's on the other side of the county.
And it's in Carroll County. So, people are utilizing that facility, and we have become very familiar with it. So, our units have been over there a couple, even sometimes, two or three times a day for calls, so we will see a shift begin to occur in the call volume between the two counties. And the chief left, but it was nice to see the Corporal Halterman and the vehicle up at the carnival grounds there. I had to stop before I came here for the Lions Carnival. And the only other thing I have to say is our building addition is finished. I know the town has used it a couple times, and you were there for your dinner on Wednesday. We want to bring that to conclusion. The only thing we're waiting on is for the town to sign us off, and then we'll be all done, but we see it have a little bump in the road on that process, and so hopefully, we can get that worked out, and the town will sign it off, so that we can take care and have proper ownership of the building.
One question.
Okay.
Where's the remote control that you use to change the color of the lights in the top?
Where is it?
Yeah, we could figure out how to... Yeah, we could figure out how to dim the lights and turn them on and off and do everything, but you're supposed to be able to change colors.
That's right.
And say, use the remote.
Not until you sign the burnt building permit.
That's right. I, I came up there.
Red, white, blue.
I gave them all a twenty lighting system.
I mentioned it to Stacy. Stacy and I were trying to figure out how to change the light colors.
Yeah.
You guys were going, you guys were going by the time we tried to sort it out.
So what, were you trying to, you know, have a disco going at the end there or something?
Just kinda curious. It was, it was, it was neat.
Well, if you want till, after you sign this, you can come up and I'll.
Thanks, Bruce. All right, community concern, citizen comments. Fifteen minutes we set aside, and anybody who wants to raise any issue can come on up and bring it up. Just line on up.
My name's Carl Wunder. I live at two thousand two Field Brook Lane, Manary, Maryland, in the Sterling Blen community. I just wanna bring up this one thing. I was hoping to catch Police Chief here too, to bring this up, but obviously, he has the carnival to go to. But I just wanna make sure in the transition from state trooper coverage to town coverage that somehow Buffalo Road can get included in the jurisdiction of the town police force for running radar on it, 'cause our community backs right up to it, but it's not in the town.
It's the other so, the other side of the street where they run the radar is not in town limits.
Limits, I'm not sure any of it is. Any portion of Buffalo Road is in town limits right there, 'cause we got one side of Frederick.
I think it's a set of lines. I think it's a set of lines out there.
But is that the town boundary too?
That's the town boundary too, I think.
But then one side of it is in Frederick County, and the other side's town Carroll.
Yes, it's in Carroll.
I just wanna make sure that the town police force has the ability to run it, because the neighbors that back up to it are complaining about the motorcycles drag racing, the cars drag racing, the speed, even though the speed has decreased, it's taken back up. And then also just due to the noise, 'cause there's a house that backs up to it that has been trying to sell for a while, and the main complaint that we hear from everybody is it backs the buffalo and the nu- and the noise. So I just wanna make sure that's included in the transition, that's all.
I'm suspecting that they'll probably have to have either a county sheriff out there or a trooper do it, 'cause I doubt they can run radar outside of their.
Yeah, I know, but it's like, it's kinda like that weird little.
It is, that's a good point.
Middle of the road, so it's like.
Yeah, I'm mentioning to the chief, you know, next time, you know.
We can catch them on one side of the road leaving town, but we wanna also catch speeders and people drag racing coming into town too, which would help.
I see the chief fairly often, so I'll, I will definitely raise that. That's a very good point.
I'll bring up the rest on another night. This is busy. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, thanks, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
Anything else? Come on up, Pete.
Thank you. Pete Ballas, Manary Historical Society. We at the Historical Society would like to thank the town council for securing the railroad station for us and for our community. It's just awesome with Mayor Pat. I'm sorry Mayor Pat's not here, but, uh, I know he had a lot to do with that. So I wanna thank you all very much. Looking forward when you all go to budget to make this a world-class facility that we in Carroll County, Frederick County, and surrounding areas can be proud of this station, and it will be number one. So tonight I'm here about something that the Historical Society has talked about for several, several years. It's called The Vision of Home, and many of you all may know this. It's the Blue Book. And the Historical Society printed this book in nineteen ninety-seven, and we sold the book. We sold this book as its history of our town. Those that have purchased it, it's awesome. It's just incredible amount of information out in it, and we sold out of the book. And then we were forever getting it reprinted, and it has been reprinted. And I hope to have a copy tonight, but it didn't work out. But what I wanted to share with everybody and the folks out there in TV land that are watching this, this book is gonna be available.
Pete, you better get behind the mic if you're counting on TV land.
TV land. This book is gonna be available starting on Wednesday or Thursday. I hope it's for the farmer's market at the Blossom Boutique. The Blossom Boutique will be the only place this book is being sold. Historical Society isn't, is selling it, but they're handling it at the Blossom Boutique for several reasons that we won't go into. Anyway, this book is just so full of information that I had an excerpt I wanted to share with the council tonight if they had this book. Indulge me. On June the thirteenth, nineteen forty-seven, seventy years ago, steps were taken to cope once and for all with the ever-present traffic problems in the business section. The mayor and council acted to install parking meters here. A contract was let with the Duncan Meter Company whereby that concern, in some thirty days, will install fifty meters in the business area. The machines the mayor indicated will operate from eight to six and eight to ten on Saturday. The cost of the machines will be deducted from the funds they take in, with seventy-five percent of the take going to the installing company. Just a little tidbit there, because this book is filled with all those kind of tidbits, and it takes up each year until nineteen ninety-seven. It hasn't been updated. So the book, the pictures have been enhanced, it's information, all the folks came after nineteen ninety-seven should have a copy. How much is the book? It's twenty dollars. And the twenty dollars goes to the Manary Historical Society, and we appreciate that. Now, one other thing I'd like to share. Today is a friend of mine, a very dear friend of mine's birthday. And he's a Facebook friend of mine, and, uh, early this morning about twelve o'clock, a picture came up. That was twelve o'clock this morning. I'm reading my Facebook, and his picture came up, and he was there, and, uh, I know he's a hard-working man and has the best interest of our town in his heart. So if everybody wished Bob King a happy birthday, it'd be awesome.
Thanks, Pete. And that is a great book. I really, I gotta say, I bought mine years ago, and I've been through it, and it's, it's a lot of neat stuff in there.
Good afternoon, evening. It's afternoon somewhere. Just wanted to let you all know, uh, the farmer's market committee made a decision today. We are moving the market up to the municipal lot at Cross Street and, um, Park Avenue. Uh, there are several reasons, but one of them is that we wanna make it possible to take care of that lot behind the train station, so we just decided to move it today.
So that, on a permanent basis, or just till the work gets done on the parking lot?
Semi-permanent. We're hoping that the work gets done, uh, the truck gets moved, everything gets taken care of, and that we can move it into that alcove area below the steps. So, but we thought that would be the, the best solution for right now. You know, just to rip that Band-Aid right off and, and take care of it right now. So that's what we're doing. So join us this Wednesday, three to seven. Larry and Mary will be performing, and, uh. No, that's this week.
It might just be Mary.
I gotta go practice.
Thank you, Councilman. So, uh, see us this Wednesday, three to seven, up in the upper lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be singing the same song twenty times.
Frank?
Hi. Good evening. Frank Dartsball. Um, I'm, uh, on the Board of Directors with the Industrial Development Authority and liaison with them, uh, to, through the town and effort to, uh, work on what's to be done with the Harrison, the Shear property. And, um, back in January, um, we, and I, excuse me otherwise, but I didn't, I couldn't do this later this evening, 'cause I have another engagement I'm supposed to be at right now. But anyway, um, I wanted to approach the town council, particularly because we had a meeting back in January, and we had, uh, we're gonna move forward with, uh, getting the, uh, well-sharing agreement procedure done for the testing of the wells, that part of it, and, um, paperwork needed to be filed, and then we need to proceed with the well testing. And, um, to date, as far as I know, nothing's been done at all on it. And the plan was to pretty much have everything done by about April or May. So I need to, um, try to see what we can do to get this moved forward, because a lot of time's passing and things need to get, get taken care of on the industrial development side.
Yeah, I know Frank, it's, as you and I both know, 'cause Frank's put a lot of time into this. Usually it's somewhere between Tom, our attorney, and, um, it's Isaac. Isaac, your attorney. That's usually where the, where things are, are. So Tom, any?
Well, in terms of the legal documents, they're all done, um, unless Isaac has some changes. My last conversation with, uh, the IDA's council was there really weren't, uh, any changes that in terms of the documents were concerned. They, they were fine. He might have.
I agree, I agree with Al. Yeah, I agree with that. It, it's the, it's the paperwork that needs to be done with MDE to get the ball rolling so we can do the testing. And that's where my concern is at this point.
Would that be us, or Isaac pointing his hand coming up? That's, there we go.
So I wouldn't say nothing's been done yet. Uh, we've been working with the Health Department and with MDE on this. The application, uh, to request the appropriation for those wells, um, that's gonna be submitted probably tomorrow. Uh, but, um, we're kinda lined up. We've worked with, we're talking with the, um, uh, the contractor. They are working with the, uh, the developer of the Beck property right now. And after he's done with that, then we're looking at getting on to the Harrison Lightyear property.
I, I did hear there was drilling going on out on the Beck property. So we're just gonna move the guys over when they're done there?
That's, that's the idea. Hopefully it'll flow right, right into it.
All right, well.
Well, that'd be great, yeah. I mean, as, as of today, I didn't know any of that, and as of last week, um, the IDA didn't know any of that, so.
Frank, you and I have been having meetings on this for eight years, I think?
Seven, anyway.
It's been a long time, so.
Yeah, so if we can make sure that paperwork gets done and, and hopefully maybe we can move forward. What, end of June, maybe July with some of that, um, testing then?
Get it moving, yes. Yep. Because it's a ninety-day test, so.
Right, yeah.
But, uh, hopefully we'll get it started in June, hopefully.
Well, that, that'd be good news on, on our end to, so do that, so I appreciate it.
Thanks for bringing it up, Frank. Appreciate it.
That's all right, and happy birthday, Bob.
Any, anyone else on the, uh, community concerns? All right, let's move on to the business. We've got ordinance two thousand seventeen dash seven, mixed-use commercial and residential development in the CC zone. We need to set a public hearing date on that. So it's time to whip out our calendars. Our next council meeting is going to be July tenth. Do we wanna do it on July tenth at seven fifteen? Does that sound good to everybody? All right, July tenth at seven fifteen. All right, uh, up next, ordinance two thousand seventeen dash six. This is the sign ordinance. I will, uh, move that we accept the sign ordinance. Do I have a second? Got a second from, Jason's hand was up first, Bob, sorry. Sorry. Jason was up there right away.
Sorry.
Did you want it? Change the notes. We have any discussion or any questions? Anybody? I know Bob, it was, it is your, your commission's coming from.
Yeah, this is, we, we've been trying to get this done for, how long, Scott?
Oh, sign ordinance?
Yeah.
Back when I was on it, it took me years.
Yeah. And we're pretty, pretty confident, but, uh, I think Heather's got something to say about the sign ordinance.
This is just a, a tiny fragment, so we're, we're breaking it into little bites.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good concept. Instead of just coming in with this huge thing, you're saying, we're gonna do it in little pieces.
So you're gonna have a lot of these.
Well, and, and what people don't realize is the magnitude of what this sign ordinance really is. And it's, it's a, somewhere around here I have all, this is the sign ordinance. So it's, it's just massive, and that's what we're trying to do, is break it down into bite-sized chunks.
Bite-sized pieces. Jason?
Um, so a few months ago, we sat down with, um, some of the local business owners to talk about the sign ordinance and, and how it could, uh, benefit or, or hurt their business. I remember a few businesses such as Rita's came out and, uh, someone from Memories came out and those types of things. Does this, does this fraction, or does this piece of this sign ordinance, uh, help or hurt, uh, a business like Rita's that allows them to put a sign, um, on the back of their business facing yet a public street, but not, is, is not designated as the primary building frontage? When trying to take a closer look at it before you answer, just looking at section three subsection two, it sounds like that this wording would, would or could possibly allow them to put signage on the, on the rear of that building still facing a public street.
If I'm, if I'm correct, Heather, the intent is to allow that signage, for example, Chipotle.
Yeah.
If you are looking for Chipotle in Manary, you can, you can drive right by it and not know that you just drove right by it.
The sign faces into the center, not out to the road, wherever it is.
So this addresses, this addresses those areas. Um, Rita's tried it for a while last year. They, they put a sign up and, and his, he's just said, said his sales were up eighteen percent, I believe.
Yeah, it was, he, he put a temporary sign up out back, and his sales were up substantially.
I believe he still has it up, but.
Well, yes.
Would, would that allow him then?
This allows him at that point to do that. That's one of the reasons that we're doing this in small chunks, because this is something that needs to happen now.
I just wasn't sure if this section of it, 'cause you guys had mentioned you were, you were doing pieces. I wasn't sure if this section of it did that.
Yes.
And my explanation of saying this, uh, section three subsection two, that would cover that possibly. But we wanna make sure that it helps our businesses grow so that people driving along twenty-seven, um, Ridge Road and, and.
Well, we're gonna start dealing with primary frontage and secondary frontage now, and it, it defines those two in here.
Okay.
As, as exactly what they are.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right, Larry?
Yeah, I mean, my understand, I stopped by and talked to Heather a little bit this morning to get a better understanding of it. So I certainly understand Chipotle and Quickfire and GNC, that whole strip. Having a sign on the back makes perfect sense to it, even, even over Rita's and, and maybe some of the other business over there. So I think this does help them. My question to everyone at this table is, is, uh, is there any concern about a, possibly a business that has a secondary frontage where this may not be appropriate? And, and do we need to have something that allows the planning commission to make sure it's an architectural fit to the building? Do we need any added protection, uh, based on any other shopping centers or areas, businesses in town?
As always happens, the first thing you have to deal with is the exception to the rule. And invariably, the first person that comes up is the exception to the rule. The, the advantage to the way we're doing things now is staff will be able to deal with those issues right now, instead of having to wait for a, for a, um, planning commission meeting, have discuss. They can sit there and discuss and maybe reach an agreement with the business owner right then and there.
Versus waiting for two or three planning meetings for something to happen.
Yeah, where, you know, trying to get it on an agenda, or, you know, we're gonna come up to that July meeting, and it's always one that, if it, if they have it, it's, it's not usually well-attended by the, by the commission members.
And the other good thing with this, the intent was originally, if I recall, to establish parameters and guidelines for businesses that when they wanted to come, they had something and knew what they could start with to at least approach the town and say, hey, here's my idea, and it meets the, all these criteria. Work with town staff. That would empower them to say, well, you need to tweak this, do this or that to make a complaint, and then basically go through planning only if it didn't meet those guidelines and needed some additional oversight. All right, okay. That used to be all the planning meetings.
Oh, yeah.
Talk signs, sign, sign, nothing else.
I've, I've seen, watched planning meetings where for an hour, an hour and twenty minutes, we're talking about signs on the Dodge dealership.
The hope is to eventually automate this.
Yeah.
So when somebody comes in, the sign goes, okay, it meets all the requirements in the code. Staff can just sign off on it, and you can go put your sign up.
Yeah.
As opposed to somebody trying to start a business and waiting months to put a sign up.
I, I get it, and certainly in a scenario like Chipotle and that, that shopping center.
That whole strip.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect sense, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If unanimous to me. Next on our agenda.
Hundred to go.
We'll get there.
All right, next on the agenda is the corridor study. Do you need a short recess to get yourselves all ready, Heather?
Yeah, let's, let's just take maybe a three, three to five-minute recess.
Okay, let's say a five-minute recess, and then we will come back for the Maryland twenty-seven corridor study. All right, we're going to have, we're going to have a presentation on the Maryland Route 27 corridor study. It's up on your screens. Floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Paul Silverman. I am with the consulting engineering firm, Sabre Wang and Associates. And we've been working with the town over the past year or so on the Route 27 corridor and study and looking at some improvements. And I'm going to try and run through, you know, an abbreviated presentation to summarize a lot of work. So, we have some poster boards in the back, you know, after the presentation. And we can take a few questions at the end as well. So, I'm just going to jump right in. Next slide. So, what I'm going to talk about in the presentation is a little bit about our methodology. I'm going to talk about what area we studied and a little bit about existing conditions. We're going to talk about planned and potential developments, the land use, changes that may happen in the corridor. We'll talk about future traffic. We're looking about 25 years out into the future. Then we're going to talk about some proposed roadway improvements. And we'll summarize it and take some questions and answers. And we also have some plans. May be able to roll them out up here, but some concept plans of what the corridor may look like. So, next slide. A little bit of a teaser, so you don't have to wait all the way to the end to find the summary of findings. But, you know, our land use forecast, which serves as the basis of our traffic forecast, were done cooperatively with the town and the consultant team. And we have a land use expert here tonight as well as the county, Carroll County and Frederick County. And based on the comp plan and some potential zoning changes, annexation, what have you, up to 3 million square feet could be realized, you know, in the best of economic conditions. And an additional 850 dwelling units, primarily single-family homes, that would translate into about a little over 8,000 more cars on the road during rush hour and up to 70,000-plus cars on the road over a typical weekday. So, that's a lot of traffic being generated by the land use. But we wanted to be aggressive in our forecasting to make sure that, you know, the most robust roadway program could be evaluated. Next slide. The methodology, I think the first thing I want to emphasize is that we've had a lot of stakeholder and public outreach. We had two community meetings, one a month ago, one last summer. We've had working technical meetings with the Streets and Roads Commission at the last meeting. We've been working extensively, meeting about quarterly with Carroll and Frederick Counties as well as the Maryland State Highway Administration. So, we have had a lot of great input on the technical side. For the existing conditions, what we really did was we just documented what's out there today for the transportation network as well as the traffic conditions. Then we did a land use forecast and we inventoried all the vacant land in the town, potential annexation areas, and even outside the annexation areas beyond, just beyond into the counties. And figured out based on zoning and other factors, what the yield, what could be built. And then based on that, we projected future traffic. Both traffic generated by new land uses right in and around town as well as growth, regional growth in commuter and freight traffic, you know, some people coming from Westminster and on down Montgomery County and the like. And then based on that, we determined what didn't work, you know, on the roads and what might need to be improved. Everything from just adding a new traffic light all the way to building a new road, local road or widening 27. So, our study area consisted of over 20 some odd intersections, both along 27 as well as Main Street and some other roads in town. But we're just going to focus on 11 of the most critical intersections are going to be highlighted in the presentation tonight. Obviously, every traffic light and intersection up and down 27 from the Montgomery County line on up to North Main Street was included. Next slide. Want to talk a little bit about average daily traffic. So, just to give you a sense, you know, the magnitude, so today's volumes when the corridor, there are parts of 27 that are over 15,000 or 20,000 vehicles a day around the I-70 interchange. And then as you come to the north side of town, it drops a little bit below 15,000 vehicles per day. Other roadways in the town carry much less traffic. Some of the other state routes, you know, carry maybe a little bit closer to 5,000 or 10,000. But some of the very local streets, the town streets are under 5,000 or even lower. So, this is just a baseline for reference. That was part of what we documented. Next, we want to talk about walking and biking. You know, it wasn't just about what do you need to do on 27 to move more traffic. But it was really, this study was also about connecting the east and west sides of town, which are really in many ways bisected and cut off by 27. 27 was built as a bypass almost 40 years ago to Main Street. And now that, you know, there's been development along that part of town and more development is coming, what do we do about that bypass? Do we widen the bypass? Do we build a bypass to the bypass? You know, these are important decisions for the towns. They can partner with the county and the state. The one thing we noticed immediately is you can't walk on 27. It's really tough to find anywhere to cross. And you can't really bike on 27. And so, these were gaps and the town is aware of these and wants to improve the connectivity. Next slide. Talk real quickly about intersection grading. We like to give intersections grades, just like you used to get in school. Where an A is really good and an F is really bad. An F means you can't move and it's gridlocked. So, one really important things to point out is that when it comes to grades, the town and the state have different mobility standards. The state standard is a D. It's pretty much anywhere in the state, that's what they aim for. And that's a good efficient use of pavement. You're not building too much pavement, but you're building enough pavement to keep traffic moving. The town has a little bit of a higher mobility standard. They don't like as much traffic congestion, so they're a C. So, we have to bear this in mind when we're coming up with the improvement options because it is a state road and the state has a different standard than the town. So, we had to wrestle with what standard should we aim for. We'll talk a little bit then about what we found out for today's traffic. And we have a color-coded map in here. It's probably hard to see on the screen, but we have it in the back of the room if anybody's interested. These posters are with the town. They're here anytime. All signalized intersections, all traffic lights currently operate at a D or better today in the morning or evening rush. There are a few intersections and some of them are just the stop sign approach, not the entire intersection. They don't meet the C grade. 27 at Park and Twin Arch is a D, but it doesn't meet the C grade. And so on and so forth in Main Street and Ridgeville and a couple on down 144 and then Main Street as well. So, that's existing conditions. So, you know, there are a couple of concerns that the town has been monitoring in terms of traffic operations and traffic conditions. And now we're going to start looking to the future. So, we're bearing that in mind as we build our recommendations, come up with our ideas and think about when to phase them and when they're needed. So, the first thing we did was sort of this land use inventory and look at undeveloped parcels. And so, bear in mind that this is things that sort of are very likely to happen. For example, like a property where the town is currently reviewing a site plan or application. And some things that are just zoned, just potential to happen and are a bit speculative at this point. But again, we work collectively to have a reasonable yield and some that we could build our forecast off of. So, the color codes in the map, the purple indicates parcels that are within the current town boundaries. And that is about 400 acres of land that could be developed or redeveloped. And there are some names on there for some of the larger parcels that may be better known, like the Beck or the Harrison, et cetera. The blue parcels are outside, beyond the town's borders and beyond anything they're going to annex. So, it's under county jurisdiction. So, the county gave us input on that. It's about 500 acres. And then the green is annexation. This is stuff that's in the comp plan. It's land that the town plans to annex and have jurisdiction over. And that's about 1,000 acres. So, total, we're looking at about 1,900 acres of potential development area. And geographically, it's very much aligned on the east side of town, although there is some in the southwest and northwest parts of town. Next slide. So, the potential build-out, again, this is color-coded. So, the red is commercial, the orange is office, the blue is residential, and the purple is industrial or light manufacturing. There's some also codes for it. But basically, we're looking at 855,000 square feet of retail. It's to be any kind of retail, a large shopping center, big box, something like that. 1.4 million square feet of office. And a little more than a half a million square feet of industrial, light industrial, light manufacturing. And then the 850 dwelling units. So, what does all this land use mean in terms of traffic, right? If the town rezoned nothing and if the town annexed nothing and if the county did nothing, you know, you might still need to make some improvements on 27 because commuter traffic is going to grow. But it would not be anywhere near the magnitude that we're talking about. So, what does it mean? What does these different land use types mean? How's it translate into more people driving? So, this is just kind of a cheat sheet graphic to help explain. So, for retail, it's a very high generating traffic use. For a 50,000-square-foot retail site, so say like a grocery store or something like that, it generates about 200 car trips in a rush hour and about 2,000 per day. For an office space, about 50,000 square feet, so, you know, medium-sized office building, that's about 125 cars in the rush hour and then 800 cars per day. Industrial, which is obviously a little less intense than office or retail, for the same 50,000 square feet, it would be about 50 cars during the rush hour, cars and trucks, about 500 per day. And then for a single-family home, for 100 dwelling units, you know, decent-sized subdivision, it would be 100 cars in a rush hour and 1,000 cars per day. So, what this looks like, if I were to illustrate this spatially for you guys on the next slide, and I apologize because like north is upside down. So, 27 is this line here. So, what we did is we showed a bar for each parcel and how much rush hour trips, car trips it would generate. And everything, all of the highest bars are to the east of 27. So, Colburn, LaShire, Twin Arch, Beck, Pank, all of those properties are generating a lot of the traffic, mainly to the east of 27. And that adds up to about 8,000 new cars on 27. Again, this is 25 years out and under ideal economic conditions. So, as you might expect, this creates a challenge for the existing roads to move all this traffic. So, what would happen if we just approved all this development, let it build out and didn't do anything for the roads? So, what it would mean is along Route 27, every intersection would be, four would be below a D in the AM, many of them Fs, and nine below a D in the PM. And what that would really mean is the speeds would drop very low. There would be long queues to move up and down the corridor. And the stop-and-go traffic could create some more safety risks for certain types of collision that are prevalent and congested stretches. So, you know, I think this exercise demonstrates that, you know, there is a need to do some kind of roadway improvements. And what kind of improvements can we do and to what mobility standard is sort of the next phase of our study. So, in our roadway improvement analysis, we looked at a couple of different scenarios. So, I'm going to focus on year 2040, just so we know ultimately where we need to be. If there are time and questions, I can go back to more of a short-term interim, year 2025. We looked at two standards, a standard for letter grade D and a standard for letter grade C. And we looked at two network scenarios. One where only improvements were made to the state road, 27. And then improvements where the town built some local streets, like Center Street extended, Century Drive extended, as well as some improvements to 27 to create a better grid, see if the grid helped. And the types of improvements we looked at were upgrading traffic controls, like putting in a new signal, changing the lane assignments at an intersection, what lane you can turn in and go straight, adding new lanes at or through an intersection, and then adding a new roadway, a local street to connect to 27 or connect other local streets. So, this was a pretty large menu, a bunch of options to test and mix and match. And so, basically what we found, I'm not going to go into the details on this slide because it's really tough to see the red arrows, but we have copies of the presentation if anybody's interested. The bottom line is if you aimed for a level of service D, a little tolerated, a little bit more congestion just in this corridor, just on the state road, you didn't have to build as many new lanes at intersections and such. If you went for a C, you had to add more through lanes on 27 and more lanes on the side streets coming onto 27. So, that's a cost. That's a cost to the project that would be weighed in evaluating the need for the project, the competitiveness or funds around the state. So, that was one thing we took into consideration. When we looked at the new, next slide, the new local roadway connections, this is what has been in the comp plan, the Center Street extension extended across to the east of 27 and tying into Century Drive. And then a connection north from Century up to Wardersville. And we even looked at continuing that local road up to LaShire. And so, when we looked at the with-new roadway traffic analysis for our design year of 2040, what we saw is when you went for a tolerated, a little bit more congestion and went for a letter grade D and you built some new local roadways, that there were even intersections that didn't, that can remain as they are today and don't need to be improved, like Twin Arch and Park. If you build the Center Street connections and if you widen it Center Street, you can relieve a lot of traffic there, right? That's kind of logical, grid network, diffuse, distribute the traffic. So, that was good news, you know, that under the most robust roadway recommendations that we could spread out the traffic a little bit and accommodate a lot of growth for the town. So, I'm going to shift now to talk a little bit about the roadway design because it's not just about where you build new streets, but what they actually look like. So, when we talk about the roadway, right now, the roadway kind of has three different segments or sections. So, from about South Main Street through the I-70 interchange, you have a nice wide, four-lane roadway with median and wide shoulders. You get a little bit further north, coming up to Twin Arch or the Park and Ride, you still have four lanes, but there's no median and the shoulders get a lot narrower. And then when you get north of Twin Arch Road, you only have one lane in each direction, no median, and you still have a good shoulder. So, we started to think about, you know, what kind of elements would we want in this redesigned roadway, right? It was built as a bypass with no frills, just to move traffic around town, stay off Main Street. But today, it's not really, it may be serving regional traffic, but it's not really serving the needs of the town. So, we thought about things like sidewalks and turn lanes, more through lanes, bike lanes, side paths, and a median to help create a little bit more of a boulevard feel when you're using the corridor or walking or biking on the corridor. So, when we started to lay out cross-sections for this, again, we looked at the needs for the cross-sections. again, we, we looked at the needs for the cross sections based on the letter grade we were aiming for and if you improve side streets. So for the no new local roads, if you didn't build any local streets, you'd wind up with a six lane Route twenty-seven, plus a median, plus sidewalks and a trail. So although it kind of would have a boulevard feel, it would still be pretty wide and a little bit challenging to cross. If you built some of the local streets, you could keep the four lane section. You could have your median, have your sidewalk, have your side path. And if you could tolerate the letter grade D, you could, you could get a four lane boulevard and make it work, accommodating all the local, local traffic. So just to summarize, again, if you, if you don't do any roadway improvements on twenty-seven or any local streets, all the study intersections along twenty-seven will fail in twenty-five years. So we see the project purpose and need as something that the state can take into their formal planning and project development process design. That the current two to four lane undivided roadway, it has no pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. It doesn't even meet the state's design standards anymore. And it doesn't support the town's planned growth, economic development, or goals for connectivity. So there is a real legitimate purpose and need for this project. And what we found when we looked at year twenty forty, a four lane section would be adequate to provide a letter grade D. You'd need a little bit more lanes for a letter grade C. Center Street and Century Drive extensions do reduce the necessity of additional turn lanes at a couple of intersections. We are still recommending some other intersection improvements at Penn Shop, the I seventy westbound ramp, Wardersville, Ridgeville, and one at Main Street and Center. There are a couple of new traffic lights that'll be needed in the corridor at North Main Street, LaShire, and Center Street. And I will comment quickly, for the interim year, for twenty twenty-five, say in the next eight years or so, you don't need to build any of the new local streets in the next eight years. You can make a couple intersection improvements on twenty-seven, keep traffic moving. It's, it's really as you get closer to twenty forty that you do need to have all the roadways in place. So more specifically, the boulevard section is about a hundred feet wide. But the good news is that when they built the bypass, they set aside a right of way. They thought it might be widened one day. Two eleven foot lanes in each direction, six foot shoulders that you can bike on the road if you so are inclined, curb and gutter, a four foot buffer between the roadway, the curb and the sidewalk, then a six foot sidewalk on the west side, and a ten foot path on the east sides. You don't have to bike in the street. You can have a more leisurely ride on the side of the road. And then a raised planted median, I think the state is not too keen in trees in the median because they might have some drainage features in there and they don't want deep roots, but you probably have some shrubs or something. So, but a median nonetheless, to have a more of a landscape feel. The dualized design, next slide, it maintains the access control and the functionality of a bypass because all of the new developments would still have to have their driveways and entrances from local streets. But it still provides a more complete street and it provides traffic calming and smoother flow through the town. It improves safety by having a median than just a double yellow center line. It provides continuous infrastructure to walk or bike. And it provides a consistent design all the way through town with the curbs, the gutters, acceleration, deceleration lanes, rather than just this sort of ad hoc widening that's been happening out there. And it meets the state's standards, letter grade D. So how much does this all cost? I know everybody brought their checkbook tonight, so. For just twenty-seven for the state road, we're looking about three point seven miles. Sixteen million, maybe sixteen to eighteen million, depending on what the actual analysis of stormwater impacts. You would need some new stormwater management infrastructure. Right of way, we believe that there is sufficient right of way to do anything that needs to be done. And you'll still have some additional buffer space. One exception may be down by Penn Shop. The right of way is pretty close to the street there. Very minimal utility conflicts, there's a couple of overhead utility lines, Penn Shop and Center Street. We did not do an extensive environmental inventory, but we don't believe at this time that there are any wetland streams or forested areas impacted. For the local roadway network, which is Center Street, Century Drive, some of those extensions and connectors, that's only about one point eight miles, so it's about half. But it's all new streets because they don't exist today. I think about ten million. Same thing, stormwater management. Most of this, except maybe the piece of Center Street, but most of this is private property today. So the town would have to acquire it or work with developers to deed it. Minimal utility impacts, a lot of it is farmland, so there's not, you know, utility poles running in the middle. Again, we don't believe any environmental features are impacted. So what are our recommendations to the town for moving this? Really, it's more than just a roadway or a corridor, it's a network. Moving this entire package, network of improvements through. First and foremost, get it into the county's priority letter, Carroll County's priority letter. The, the state has been a great partner and the county supports this, and that's, that's the first process, is getting those agencies to bring it into their project development process. For the next seven years, we suggest that the state begin the project planning and preliminary engineering, final engineering design, right of way acquisition, utility, any environmental permitting that may be needed, and actually construct the improvements. That's, that's fairly fast for a big roadway project like this to go from just an idea on paper to pavement in seven years, but, but it is possible and it could be fully funded. Between twenty eighteen and twenty thirty, we would suggest that you finalize the local roadway improvements. So obviously for twenty-seven, you already have an alignment, it already exists. But some of these other streets, you're not really sure of the final path they're going to take. So maybe a little more study, some preliminary, final engineering, and the same right of way acquisition, permitting, and construction. We see a mix of funding needed to move these projects forward. There'll be some town funds out of a capital budget. There could be some private sector funding through developer impact fees or road clubs or tax increments or so forth. State funding for twenty-seven could come out of their capital programming. And then there's a number of different grant programs. I think one of the good things about our recommendations is it can be done in pieces. Different pieces can be broken out, even just building a trail or a sidewalk can be done. You don't have to wait for the road to be widened, you can set it back far enough. And there are great grant programs for schools and sidewalks and trails and traffic safety. And, you know, I think the town could be very competitive in those areas. So we really see, assuming that the council is supportive of this study and these recommendations, we really see the next steps would be sort of begin these breakout projects. So, you know, get the state to formally adopt it into their project planning and development design. Get the local roadway studies and planning going for the roads and the trails. And then as the site plans come in, developer coordination, you know, talk about, you know, deeding some of the right of way for local roads and connections and, and building the segments of the, of the local street grid. So I know that was super fast and a lot of information, but wanted to leave time for questions and answers.
Any questions from here at the table? Larry?
Again, being the new guy, I get to answer, I get to ask all the silly questions. So how does our town code, I guess I'm looking at the staff for an answer to this. When a developer comes in with a project and they're trying to justify traffic concerns, do we have a grading system in our code right now? Do we grade intersections A through F as well? Or how do we measure the impact of a development that's, that's being created?
Yeah, generally speaking, just like Paul mentioned, a C or better is what we're, we look for.
We would require the developer to do a study on his nickel and come forward and show what it's going to be.
Okay, and right now, our town standard is a C as stated?
Yeah, there's a couple of exceptions where you could have a D if it's less than two percent of an impact to the next intersection or, you know, things like that. Generally speaking, it's a C or better.
Yeah, I, I would caveat that although we've done a corridor study which has a wide geographic scope, this by no means absolves any project development site plan from not having to do their own study and evaluate very site specific issues like access points and other intersections and traffic controls and the things that, you know, we didn't, we didn't get to that level in this study. So this is not a free pass for three million square feet of development to get rubber stamped by any means.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
I got a question because I was at the last meeting.
Yeah, actually, can you come up?
Is the town pursuing a path, and I'll point you, of aggressive economic development that necessitates what is talked about?
No.
Then it's very much a moot point.
No. Well, but some of this, a lot of this is outside of town. We, we do not project any of that happening in any of the areas that we control. But as you can see, a fair portion of this is stuff that's not ours. We have no say over it. Well, it's worst case, I think it's worst case scenario. I'll, I'll bring up my, my issue with the report. And that is, it appears to me to be based on, I guess what I would call a status quo system. I spend a lot of time riding the CNO canal. Whenever I'm on the canal and I look over at the railroads, I always feel sorry for these guys who in eighteen twenty-six shelled out a fortune to invest in the building of the canal because they didn't realize that, that, you know, at the same year in eighteen twenty-six, over in Baltimore, they started building out the BNO. And they just sat back and said, well, for millennia, we've always done things with boats and on water. That's the way it will always be. By twenty forty, well, you know, I tend to think we probably won't be flying George Jetson's cars. I think we probably will be driving connected autonomous vehicles. I think that's really a pretty strong chance to be doing that by twenty forty, which may make a lot of this moot. Yeah, it may make it go away.
Well, I want, I want, I want to respond to those two comments very briefly. I mean, first of all, you know, whether the forecasts are less aggressive or more aggressive, I think there's, there's value in taking a holistic look, you know, at a corridor level rather than just treating each site plan that comes in ad hoc so you know what may, may or may not be coming and what to do. It's by no means saying that, you know, the town should rally the funds and build everything. Every step, especially the state highway, and they have checks and balances in their project. They'll redo our forecast. They'll make sure that, you know, if it takes them five years, they update things. If things aren't as rosy, if gas prices go up, that, they have taken many projects into project development and put them on the shelves.
Hey, I, I, let me, if you, do you want to talk to me, you know, you will need to come to the microphone because we will get complaints from the people out there who listen. Go ahead.
And then the last, the last thing, I mean, I agree with you that technology could have a tremendous impact on, on how we get around and things like that. But at, at this point, you know, we, we can't really say for sure that self-driving cars will take cars off the road or instead of having people driving themselves to work, you could have driverless cars, zero occupancy cars, and adding more traffic to the road. So we, we don't know, we, we hope that it would make things more efficient and need to build less roads. But we did want to take a traditional look forward just to help the planning and engineering staff work with the county and the state and have a long-term view when they, when they bring in this. And this, this follows with the zoning in your comp plan and what the county said, so.
Yeah, and I realize it's a kind of a worst case scenario because like when I look at this chart for Harrison LaShire, that's the largest impact, whereas we anticipate that being largely park property in our actual plant. A small office park with a lot of parks, so that, that would substantially change things. Well, that's, but our plan is mostly park property, not this big of an impact. But, but still, I realize this is a worst case scenario and it is a, it's a great study to have. And Ben, I'm assuming you've got a question? Yeah, come on up, Ben, thanks.
Ben Greenstein, one one five South Main Street, Mount Air, Maryland. I have two questions. In your projections, there's roughly twenty-five hundred households right now in the town, is that about right? Thirty-five hundred? So thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, it's closer to thirty-five, well, I think we have, don't we have like thirty-three hundred water connections?
It's like thirty-two hundred.
Yeah, like thirty-two hundred water connections, that's probably about three thousand houses because we have businesses as well in that number.
So three thousand households is doing roughly fifteen to sixteen thousand, I think it was, vehicles per rush hour was your slide? So if we have an extra eight hundred households, you projected an additional?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand, so the ratios are different. Is there a reason, like, for example, do you think new houses will have more household or cars per household than current ones, or is that? Like, it's like a twenty percent increase in households and a fifty percent increase in traffic?
Thank you for the question. The fifteen thousand cars per day that are on twenty-seven are not all town residents.
Yes.
They're commuters that are coming from Westminster or Frederick or, you know, Damascus or whatever. We didn't drill down to find out like who lives in town and so on and so forth. The eight thousand new cars per rush hour, that's both rush hours, not just one, is not only from the new single family houses, but it's also from the shopping and the office and the industrial. So it, that ratio wouldn't be calculated like that, but yeah, that's.
Is the, are the financial projections that you put up here in today's dollars or twenty forty dollars?
Today's dollars.
Thank you.
Ron Thompson, Van Mar Associates.
Hey, Ron.
I would like to request that the council add an additional element to the study. And it consists of creating a signature entry into the downtown using the Center Street corridor and what would be a new interchange, relocating Center Street, interconnection up to a new location between Center Street and Park Avenue. We believe that this addition would facilitate movements into the downtown. In my meeting, I've had meetings with State Highway, a meeting with State Highway. They've indicated that if the town were to include this concept in and analyze it in the traffic study, then they could potentially, I mean, there's no guarantee, see a way of supporting this. This type of project would create a great public-private partnership where you could see federal dollars being spent for an interchange with local match coming from private development. There's interest from the county has said that if the town were to support it, they would give it serious consideration. The key to it is including it in the town's traffic study as an element and therefore would request that that occur. As you can see, it would cross over twenty-seven, not requiring improvements to twenty-seven. It would be consistent with what would be the full build out of twenty-seven, not impeded in any direction.
I, I mean, I would say I've not seen it in detail, so this is first I've seen it. I would say. Okay, at the last presentation?
For, for anybody that wants to know what this concept is, if you go to thirty-two and you go to Ten Oaks, same setup, you have two circles that you can end up crossing.
Oh, I know what you're talking about, okay.
That's what this design is.
You can also see it on Route three forty in Frederick. They don't have the two circles, but they have an interchange because that goes directly into development.
Well, I would say that.
It definitely takes the load off the road without impacting the road because you have egress and.
Yeah, certainly something for streets and roads. And it's certainly something to look at before we actually go spending any money on any road improvements.
I mean, streets and roads can look at it. I, I'm not a pooh. I mean, Streets and Roads can look at it. I, I'm not opposed to the concept. I, I know from an engineering standpoint, the purpose, and I, I see benefits to it.
And I, and I think that the key element is timing is always everything. And what I'm requesting and asking is that it be part of the Route twenty-seven corridor study before you finalize it. Uh, there seems to be interest from the state county. There's interest from, um, officials within the town. So rather than letting it just die, include it so that you are, you have that option in the future to move that forward, should the town so choose to do it.
Larry?
Is this something that could be added as an addendum to the study? Would that satisfy the purpose? Uh, is this, is there a way to make it an option, uh, within this study as drafted? I mean, is that an acceptable...
My recommendation would me, would be to make it a separate chapter, that, so it's not having to redo everything. That if an interchange or like this were added, here's the, here's what the roadway network would look like, the redistribution of traffic, the model's already built, Paul already has it. Here's the impact at Park Avenue and Twin Arch Road. And here's what would have to occur for that to be. It doesn't have to be in place of or modification of the Route twenty-seven improvement.
Uh, one more, at, at the beginning you said "we" and I just want to know who "we" is.
"We" is me.
"We" is you.
Right now, it's a concept. Um, I, uh, in previous career, a traffic engineer, uh, spent twenty-five years with a master's from Penn State all along the East Coast internationally, developing these types of concepts. Uh, I do work for development, uh, developers within the town. The potential for developers participating in this, uh, could occur. It's a project that far exceeds the development economics of just what the town allows for development. But clearly, if you're looking at it in terms of coupling development money with federal money, that's a very real, uh, possibility.
All right.
Does that a pen, Jason?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Um, you had mentioned that, uh, you had a meeting with county and/or state uh, about the concept and that they had expressed interest if the town was to take that over. Would you be willing to provide some documentation saying that if the town was to add this to the report that they would further their interest into supporting the town?
I think I've, I have to double-check if I haven't already provided the, some of that to the town, but I have meeting notes from the town.
To the town, to the Streets and Roads Commission, to make sure. Not that I don't trust you, I'm just, for documentation purposes.
Right, with, uh, uh, State Highway, acting district engineer and staff.
Well, at this point, this is actually planning's document, is it not? The corridor study, is, is this planning or is this EDC or both, or?
It's, um, it's a lot of people's documents. Um, I think the best thing to do, um, planning, um, they, after digesting the, the study, they may actually have some comments to forward to the town council for consideration. And likewise with Streets and Roads. Um, Economic Development Commission may as well. Um, those are the, the three main commissions, um, that may have a joint interest in this.
Can you send it all through at the same time?
They've already received it.
All right.
Um, before the, the first, or the second community meeting. Um, so I think it's, it's definitely good to digest. Um, you know, we're not requesting any action from the town council this evening.
We'll wait and see what Streets and Roads and Planning come back with. Leslie, looks like Leslie's got something.
Leslie Dickinson, eight oh three North Main Street, Planning Commission. My question, um, in terms of, of what Ron is asking, does that need to be done tonight? Are you voting on this tonight?
No, no. This is just for informational purposes, really.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Because some of us have seen it, find it interesting and...
Bill, are you moving over, are you moving over to take the mic next, okay?
Bill Butts, Planning Commission. The interesting thing about this is that as a result of doing the corridor study, what we've seen is there's now interest on the part of S H A for possible participation and funding and support for some enhancement of twenty-seven. Before we initiated the corridor study, that wasn't a possibility. It was all with thirty-two. All right, so I see that as healthy. I see that as worthwhile. Because ultimately, we are going to need some help out there. One half of all of the through traffic on twenty-seven, uh, the total traffic is through traffic. It originates north of here. It's a reality. Regardless of how much development we may choose to do over the next twenty-five years, it's a reality. We need to have S, S H A on board. That's valuable.
Anything else? Anything else?
I, I, I would just comment that, uh, you know, the, the interchange proposal, uh, I have no doubt that it could be designed, you know, properly and, and operate. Um, we did not do that analysis for that concept. Uh, we, we would have to do that, um, to test it. Um, you know, at, at the end of the day, um, although the road is owned and maintained by the state, it serves your town and your land. So whether you want a more boulevard type of thing or a more freeway type of thing with an interchange or some kind of hybrid, um, it's, it's really your guys' decisions. Our goal in leveraging our work for the town and our relationships with the county and the state was to present a project that they felt was very viable, very practical, that's their buzzword, and, and affordable. Um, you know, adding an interchange, al- although the, the public-private partnership could, could also be very attractive as well, it dri- it drives up the cost and it makes it more challenging for them, them to fund when you're competing for, for, uh, limited dollars. And, and certainly, more rural counties have been very successful in this administration in getting transportation. That may not always be the case, so we, we were mindful of that in trying to scale the project, um, to, to more reasonable costs. I, I, I have nothing for or against that concept. I, I just want to say that's why we arrived at the concept that we did. Just, we didn't want to blow the state out with the price tag so high that they, they really walked away. And so, well, you know, we just, we just can't afford a project like this. Come back when you have something serious. So that's, that's how, how we did, but, but, but it's very intriguing. I mean, we'd be happy if the council or the, or Streets and Roads wanted us to take a second, we'd, we'd be happy to.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Bob?
Well, I'm just, I just, before everybody leaves, what are we gonna do, Ron? What do you?
There's nothing for us to, uh, uh, for the council to do at this point.
One to the three commissions.
Right, but is he going to present this to Streets and Roads, Planning Commission? I mean, is that what your intent is?
I am more than happy to present this to every commission to get this, uh, to move forward. I think it's a great opportunity for the town, and I would like to see it, um, in a study that gives them an opportunity to make decisions in the future for how access is provided. I mean, you're talking a new downtown study, Center Street corridor study, how access is provided within the downtown development. And I think it can be a win for the town.
Thanks, Ron.
Question?
Yep.
Ultimately, uh, the study, we're all satisfied by it. Uh, do we all end up signing this study and does it go to the State Highway Administration? How, uh, what's the mechanism that, that makes this, uh, uh, makes the state highway look at this as an official document?
Probably more of a Heather question or a Barney question.
The original in, um, intent when we embarked on this study is that it would actually become an addendum to our comprehensive master plan. So the council, um, I would assume through resolution, um, would adopt the corridor study almost as a guiding policy document. And, um, it would be recognized as we, you know, um, review certain development projects and capital improvement projects.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. All right. Recommendation for a ward, we are, we have pulled the, um, the interior of the train station. They're gonna go over that some more. Um, we've got up next, recommendation for a ward of the new building over the existing denitrification plant at the, uh, water treatment plant. Barney, this is you.
I got it.
Oh, okay, Rachel, this is you.
All right, so basically for our denitrification filter building that's existing for about six years now, um, they're having problems in the weather in the wintertime with the, the open end of the filters getting exposed and it freezing and causing operational problems with the filters, so we want to, um, just enclose the building and, and put a cover over it so that it can help operate properly, so the guys aren't working extra hard to try to compensate for all that stuff. So essentially, you were gonna, uh, the building's gonna look, match the rest of the buildings that are down there. So we had, um, part of the discussion, we had six companies receive bid documents. Um, four bids were submitted and accepted. All four bids that came in were under the originally budgeted line item. So, um, which was for four hundred and fifty thousand. But, so the lowest, um, we recommend that the town, uh, town staff recommends awarding the new building of the existing denitrification filters to the lowest responsive bid, which was from, um, Conalago Enterprises in the amount of three hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four.
All right, I will move. We accept the bid from Conalago at three hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. I got a second? Bob?
Question?
Scott?
So, do we have a rating on past history performance? Have they done other things for towns that we can?
Correct me up if I'm wrong, I believe they actually built the, they built the original, um, filter. They also did our water, our, uh, water station too, just recently.
Okay, we're happy with that?
Yeah, that's...
I'm just making sure there's no issues. Sometimes you go the lowest bidder and that's not all.
There's a reason why they were the lowest bidder.
We've had that happen, so...
They've actually done a lot of our, a lot of our wastewater work already, and, and we've been very happy with it.
Very good.
Good question. Any, uh, any other questions on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Move on.
Thank you.
Got a street re- closing request here. Um, Scott, you, we got, no, we got, we have a corrected one in our packet. The, Debbie showed us the wrong one. The one, the one that's in our packet is correct. So it's Streets and Roads, I'll let you bring it up.
Okay, so, uh, they want to end up having a closure for, if everybody has it, July first, four to ten, Field Brook Lane. Um, and it looks like it's signed by all of the, uh, affected owners. So I'd like to move this forward for...
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Look unanimous to me.
So you're gonna sign, or is Pat?
Uh, well, I guess Pat's not here, so I'll sign.
Okay.
As long as everybody's agreed that he's temporarily unavailable, I can sign, so, so they can get this done. Okay. You just got one. Okay, uh, I guess maybe we'll probably get, uh, Pat's report. Um, Larry, beautification in Parks and Rec.
All right, uh, beautification on, uh, May twentieth, the Girl Scout troop, uh, twenty-seven eleven showed up at Vest Pocket Park and worked with the Beautification Commission to, uh, uh, add a whole bunch of plants over there and clean up the, uh, park. Uh, also the Mount Airy Garden Club and the Carroll County Master Gardeners, uh, were able to get a grant for nine hundred dollars worth of plants that they put out on the Rails, the Trails, um, project. Uh, the Beautification, uh, Commission also walked, uh, Wendy Ridge Park, kind of checking out where the, uh, trail, uh, goes and figuring out if there's some areas that could be improved with some grading, and they have some recommendations on that. They were also looking at the plant life back there. Uh, the town's planters, uh, they want to replace all the, uh, uh, boxwoods that have died apparently on the east side of Main Street. They only die on the east side. Uh, they also talked about, uh, trying to put a fountain at Wildwood Park where the butterfly garden is. And, uh, Brian Johnson's, uh, checking into that and, uh, figures it'll be something that'll be on a future, uh, budget. Not this year's. And also there's a new, um, kind of a bench swing in Wildwood Park. Uh, so you can go out there and, uh, and swing around on that with your, uh, loved one. So, we haven't done it yet, but we're, we're gonna get to it. Sorry, Terry. You're out. Jason's in. Parks and Rec, we had a couple of five Ks. Uh, May sixth was Avis five K run. And on May twentieth, we had the, uh, mutt run on a cool, uh, wet morning. Uh, let's see, uh, we've been talking about putting an ADA swing, and we think we figured out how to do it without violating any regulations into, uh, Watkins Park. Had an ADA swing there, and we're also talking about an ADA playground. That's something that'll take a while, uh, to, uh, to actually figure out. But it is being talked about at Parks and Rec, an entire ADA playground. Uh, we didn't have a quorum at the meeting, so we couldn't ve- vote on, uh, admitting scooters into the skate park, but we think that's, uh, gonna happen. Most of us support it, and we have had a couple of kids out there to show us that scooters can be fun out there. We stayed off of them, though. Uh, we have to elect a, uh, new chairman. They didn't have a quorum, so they couldn't vote Drew Heck as the new chairman. So he doesn't know that yet, but, uh, it's coming.
Surprise.
He wasn't there, huh?
Good, good choice, though, but...
Yeah, yeah. But... Um, let's see, uh, uh, since the last meeting, we had some families interested, uh, over by the back acre soccer fields. They're trying to add a basketball court back there. So where, uh, Pat met me out there, the mayor met me out there, and we, uh, we took a look at there to, and it looks like there might be space for it. So that's something that could be coming down the road. Uh, we are interested in trying to get a security camera added, uh, that either points from the train station toward the caboose or somewhere near the caboose, so I'll be working with Barney, uh, trying to figure out how we can get that done.
If we get a coupla put up, that'll give us...
Yeah, if we get the, uh, yeah, and that's a, that's a coming. Um, and camp night will be August twelfth, uh, which is the second Saturday of August. And both the beautification and Parks and Rec discussed ATVs at their meetings and the possibility of allowing them into, uh, parks. And both of those, uh, commissions have said that they do not want ATVs in any of the town parks, so...
All right, thanks, Larry.
And one, one comment that I would have about that, having been so many years with Parks and Rec, I wouldn't allow them either. How are the kids gonna safely get those vehicles from their backyard into the park?
Right, right, yeah.
So that's, that's just one of the concerns.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. Uh, all right, up next, uh, EDC and Planning. Bob?
Okay, let's see, we had our May twenty-first Planning Commission ming, meeting. MXD zoning was discussed. Rob Scranton of CBI has offered a very comprehensive discussion about allowing mixed-use, multi-use, whatever you wanna call it, zoning in community commercial zones by special exception only. Is that right? Do I have all the right words in the right places? Okay, you're just looking at me funny. Um, the downtown master plan, RFP, is, is progressing. The Planning Commission wants to have all commissions submitting their ideas to the Planning Commission no later than the June twenty-sixth meeting. Public hearing for the sign ordinance is scheduled for Monday, June fifth, at seven fifteen Town Hall. Um, joint town commission meeting is being planned for a July event. Mr. Butts is working on that diligently. The next Planning Commission meeting is on Monday, the twenty-sixth of June, seven P M, Town Hall. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, we go to EDC. Bill McCullough, our longtime E, our longtime EDC member and current secretary, offered his resignation at our meeting last Wednesday night.
Oh, wow.
He's moving out of town and was, he moved on Friday. So, we got it on Wednesday, he moved on Friday. Dr. Andrew Williamson, the chairman, announced that the mission ends in July of seventeen. He's not going to res- to seek reappointment. Needs to spend more time with his family. So, election of officers will take place at the June meeting, so that we have some. Um, a meeting was held at the Mount Airy Inn on Wednesday, May the twenty-fourth. We always try to meet at a local restaurant every quarter. It's, it's always a pretty good, pretty good deal and pretty good meal. Um, our next meeting will be in June, the twenty-ninth, Town Hall, seven or seven-thirty, has not been ironed out yet. And, MML, um, we had our joint Frederick County, Car- Carroll County Chapters meeting this year at the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company's Activities Building, until they get another name for it. Um, Jake Romanelf, who is a Newmarket, a Newmarket Town Councilman, will serve as the president for one year beginning in July of two thousand and seventeen. Um, Congressman Jamie Raskins was there and spoke briefly about the importance of MML representatives to state and federal elected officials. Um, we've heard from many of the state reps there about legislative priorities. And the summer conference will be June the twenty-fifth or June the twenty-ninth, and that is my report.
All right, sanitation and recycling, and I guess green team too, right? Yeah, it's a...
Yeah. Extended name there. So I just want to mention before I begin my report that today is World Environmental Day, so I just think it's ironic that it's on this day that I give the report for this. So as far as recycling and sanitation, as Councilman Strong has mentioned in previous meetings, the mobile app is now available in the Android Market and App Store, and it's actually called Recycle Coach. And it'll let you know about recycling, trash, yard waste, and special recycling/pickup events within the town. And just a friendly reminder, we have yard waste pickup on Saturday, June the 10th, and again on the 24th. And if you have the app, you would know that. Also on the 24th is a special event, which is paper shredding and battery recycling event. This is at Watkins Park, once again on June 24th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at Watkins Park. And I was just.
Is that like car batteries?
Any kind of batteries.
Any kind.
Any kind of batteries.
And I was just speaking with Pete, and the shredder is actually on premise, premises, excuse me. So you don't have to worry too much about the security. So if you do have some secure documents, they will shred, you can watch them shred it right away. So you don't have to worry about that. So bring it in a cardboard box and they'll shred that too for you. It applies to all the 21771 zip code, not just town residents. And a final reminder to make sure that your yard waste is out by 6:00 AM. 6:05 doesn't work, and we've had some, we've had some complaints about, they skip my yard waste. It needs to be out the day before, so please make sure that that is out there.
Not three days before.
Not three days before, please. As far as the Sustainable Maryland Certification Task Force, think of it as the Green Team. And just getting some reports from those commission members, a lot of the efforts have already come to fruition, but we need to complete a few more activities to make sure that the town earns sustainable Maryland municipality. There are currently 35 municipalities in the state of Maryland that are already certified, and 68 which are registered, which includes our town. Resolution 2016-4, we actually put that and passed that as a town council. But I found an interesting paragraph in that, and it says, "As elected representatives of the town of Mount Airy, the town council members have a significant responsibility to provide leadership, which will seek community-based sustainable solutions to strengthen our community." And so I just want to make sure that we are all doing our part to make sure that we have a better tomorrow here in Mount Airy. And just some of the initiatives that they have already done, such as the electric charging station, Rails to Trails, Pub Runners, Oil Recycling Center are some of the things that they have already done. And we're actually currently working on bi-local campaign, energy audits, making sure that we have a Green Team charter and action plan. And then some future things that we're working on will be a community garden, business round tables, and a Win Energy Project. So those are some things for future initiatives. Recycling and sanitation will be on July 19th at 7:00 PM at Town Hall. And the Green Team will be meeting June 21st at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Streets and Roads, Scott?
Okay, Streets and Roads did not have a meeting last month since I've been elected. So the first meeting I'll get to go to, which will be on the 22nd, 7:30 here at Town Hall.
All right. Water and Sewer. Water and Sewer will be meeting Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 7:00. The topic of recent months has been looking at the projections in the town budget and the water income to try and decide if we should make a recommendation as far as changing the rate structure in the town. That'll probably be one of the discussions. Something else that's coming up is tomorrow at 2:00. Carroll County is basically taking a county tour of the stormwater management ponds, yeah, stormwater management ponds that they're going to assist with working on. One of those for us is Marydale. The schedule is for them to be here at the Marydale one at 2:00. So if anybody wants to be out there tomorrow at 2:00, I plan to be there and we'll see what the county has to say. Did I get this? See, that's what I got on my calendar. Am I right about that, Monica?
Yep, you sure are.
Although I will say, their schedule looked rather aggressive. I got two on my calendar.
You want to be there early.
Yeah, you want to be there.
You gotta get a good seat.
There are, I will say, their schedule looked rather aggressive. So I can't imagine, so I gotta believe they're gonna run them late. But I'll be there, too. So, so that's what we're doing tomorrow. And Monica?
I'm gonna follow up with that, actually. The Marydale Garden storm pond is in preliminary design, and you'll be discussing that when you're out in the field. The other thing is the update on the Twin Ridge storm pond, that we were working on that project. We figured out by looking at the numbers that even though we were gonna be spending close to a million dollars construction on that project, it wasn't gonna meet all of our state requirements. So now, we haven't abandoned doing work at that pond, but we're looking for an alternative site now with Carroll County Government, their environmental office, to find another site that's gonna meet our requirements and maybe even provide more. So we're going into that process right now. Also, we've recently had incidences of door-to-door soliciting within the town neighborhoods, and we can cite and find these vendors if we have the proper information. So instead of having the discussion on Facebook, please call Town Hall and give us the information on, you know, the company, the person you have contact with, any kind of phone numbers timed, so that we can fill out affidavits and then we can cite and find those companies appropriately.
And if I'm not mistaken, to date, no applications have been?
No, nobody's, no, we've only had one company that's gone through the process and gotten a penalty.
And they've already, and that's expired.
Right. If you actually, if you go on the town website, that expired one still shows up as being the only one. So we may want to get that pulled. So the town website will show none are currently active.
Right, so it just is really helpful. People just call here instead and give us the proper information so that we can, you know, cite and find these people.
Even call and leave a message.
Yeah.
And call the police, not do the Facebook things. That's what John spoke about the other day.
Yep.
Yeah, they're posting that on their Facebook page. And just the last thing I have, that, you know, in this time of year, when it's warmer, you're gonna see stray dogs running around and cats. And just as a reminder to everybody, we don't have our own animal control service, so you need to call Frederick and Carroll County.
Depending upon which county you're located.
Depending upon which county you are and where the dogs, where the dogs traveling.
The dogs in Frederick. No, 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 it's in Carroll.
He's running back and forth across Main Street. What do I call?
Or Buffalo Road. Wait, he's standing in the center.
I can't call either of them.
Peter, I have one question that goes back to Water and Sewer.
Sure, Bob.
Are we on tap for any well exploration or anything in this coming calendar year?
I don't think the town itself is actually doing any, but I do know that there's somebody drilling out on the Beck property, but that's somebody looking at developing that parcel.
And that's the Beck-Center Street?
That's the Center Street stuff. So we're kinda hoping they find whatever they need to develop that, put the street through.
Oil.
Doc? Doc, you know you're supposed to come up to the podium. You've done this enough times.
So I've heard some conflicting stories about a rooster behind Park Avenue residents' houses. It goes off at 5:30 every morning. Does anyone know what's going on?
No, you can file a complaint with me and I can.
I'm not filing a complaint, I just want to know.
You don't want to, okay. There's nothing in the ordinance that prevents having chickens, but if it becomes a nuisance to the neighbors, then they file a complaint with the town.
Because of the nuisance statute.
And we usually send the resident a warning letter. If it continues, then we get it a little bit heavier.
So I was told today that there's no one taking ownership of this rooster.
Oh.
It's just running around?
It's errantly running around. I mean, I, I'm not complaining, I'm not looking for any action, I'm just wondering.
Something will eat it sooner or later.
Frederick or Carroll County Animal Control.
That only represents the views of the council president.
He has those wild cats at somebody's talking about.
I mean, there's enough, there's enough fox and bobcats and stuff running, and something will eat it. Unless somebody's taking it in at night, something's gonna eat it. All right. Tom?
I don't know how you follow that. Always thinking about. Since our last meeting, we completed the closing on the so-called Shed property. That's the property across from the Flatiron Building, so the town does own that piece, that corner there. Number two, I've worked on revisions to the Town View Rails Trails purchase agreement that was in need of revision. We'll see how that goes with homeowners association. Also worked on three agreements for the police department. One, reimbursement agreement. Two, an amendment to the police station lease, which you all approved at one of your recent meetings. That has been finalized and signed, which, with some more favorable agreements for the town. Also, a mutual aid agreement with Carroll County and our police department. That's not yet finalized, but working on that. Worked on the matter that is in litigation over the Mr. Wonsala's special exception application. I posted you all on that already. Have started work on the mixed use ordinance, which I received from Heather now that I think planning has weighed in. And also a parking lot lease for a portion, a proposed parking lot lease for a portion of the Train Depot parking lot that now is in the hands of the owner's representative.
Okay. We had the issue come up in the newsletter you sent out of the Changes in the Open Meetings Act. I've been in touch with Jim Peck at MML on that issue. It appears that there's an online course that can be taken. And he said something about getting your certifications, but MML's looking into this. It's not something that we'll be doing at the summer conference.
Right.
Because my email to them was like, hey, do we need to get this on the agenda for the summer conference?
They can't do like a lightning course or something? They must be done with it?
Well, apparently, from reading your thing, there's only three people in the state who are authorized to give the course.
Three entities, three associations, right.
No, they actually listed three specific people in your thing.
Oh, really?
We know that we've had that course before. It used to be a required course.
But I think it's, it's required for the institute, but I don't think that class qualifies under this. If it did, then, then we'd be fine. This is apparently something different and additional, so we'll have to sort that out and get this. Obviously, we'll, you know, we'll have to find out and sort that out. We'll get it sorted out.
Sounds like a job for Super Colleen.
All right, I guess we probably have a code enforcement officer report. Any other business?
I just have one thing. I know that they're already doing, where'd he go? Sorry. I know that they were already doing work on the interior of the police station, but there is one caveat towards the recommendations of the memorandum for the police station that just said that if they, considering deducting 1, 2, and 5, plus some other things, that they had done that. So I'm assuming we accepted their offer, then?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
1, 2, and 5.
Yeah, 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 okay.
All right. I will move the bills be paid.
I'll second.
Got a second from Bob. I'll assume there's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have no closed meeting that I'm aware of that we need. I will move we adjourn.
Second.
Got a second from Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
End up, I believe these are paychecks in the box.
Correct.